We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today is April 11th. This is our regular scheduled monthly board meeting, board of commissioners, and we'd like to welcome everyone who's here today. I went to the board house and we welcome each and every one of you. We'll go ahead and start the meeting. To start off with, we always have our prayer and pledge. And today, Commissioner Lewis will do our prayer and Commissioner Walker will do our pledge.
Father, we'd just like to take time out of our day just to praise you, to thank you. Thank you for sending your son for our wrongs. We'd like to ask for the wrongs that happen in this world. We'd like to ask you to help the Ukrainian people. Like for you to be with them and be with the world as stress has happened. Be with us here in McDowell County as stress has happened. We'd like to ask for your guidance as we try to lead McDowell County in improvements, keeping it safer, making it a better place for our community. We'd like to ask these things in your name.
Amen.
Attention, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, here, men and women, please.
The motion, second, any discussion? I'll play with say aye. Pardon the agenda for today?
My question, approve the agenda for today?
Say aye. The motion, second, any discussion? I'll play with say aye. Okay. First on the agenda tonight under performance is I make the opioid settlement update. We have Mr. Danny Hampton, which is always a real good one. And Angela, it's very nice to meet you.
Good afternoon. I love your new place. I'm going to speak just for a minute and I'm actually going to turn things over to Angela to further update. And as I understand it today, what we're going to be doing is kind of updating you on where we are in the opioid data research and recommendation development process that we've been going through now. We come to date prepared to make recommendations, but to kind of describe the overall nature of how we're going about on the recommendations that we're looking to make. And then we would also like information from y'all on the date, on a deadline, when you would like to have those recommendations for you to consider. And I know it's always, it's still kind of curious as to know when the funds are actually going to be released. I know we've heard spring, but we've heard other dates before. So anyway, so that's kind of where we are. The approach we're using right now is Angela will be going through this in a minute. By the way, Angela Grubb is the first ever program director for the Substance Use Coalition, or Task Force now, Substance Use Task Force for McDowell County. And we are excited to have Angela. She comes with great credentials and experience and I think is going to be tremendous value to this whole process that we're talking about. I know she's already doing great work with the Task Force. So the approach that we're using right now is you've got in front of you a strategic plan, it's still a draft of a strategic plan that we're putting the final touches on to be presented to you, that is filled with all kinds of data from the Community Health Assessment, the latest one we had. This is 2020 data that was processed in 2020 along with other data that has been updated since. Our initial recommendations are going to be built upon what you see in front of you in combination with other research that we're doing. In January, we received a grant from Dogwood Health Trust to help us do a deep dive into grassroots community research on a very intensive level, from conducting this year alone over 24 different focus groups, to doing community surveys, to digging in and getting real-time updated data. So the recommendation we're going to bring this year will be based upon what you see in front of you in combination with other information we've received. We're going to continue to do this research this year. And what our initial recommendation is, is that we come back next year with even more data-informed, updated research to take the initial investments done this year and expand on those investments. Because our recommendation is going to be that we don't just decide this year what we're going to do for the next 18 years, but we literally are welcome and verification to come back and each year offer, based upon the continued data and research that we do, recommendations every year for tweaks, adjustments, opportunities that may come into existence, that may not currently exist right now, that would be the wisest investment of the funding to use. So we're sitting around the A or B options that you have in front of you as well, that you already know, you're informed about. And so our recommendations are seeking to stay within the parameters of Plan A or Plan B, which was presented in the initial opioid settlement funding agreement that they finally settled on. And also around prevention, treatment, and recovery, trying to address all three dimensions of approaching the substance use struggles within our community. And this year is going to probably lean more heavy on what we are seeing based upon the research that we have, that you have in front of you, that needs to be done, that are probably going to be a little bit more on the treatment side, or the programs that already exist that are doing a job that may need to expand to create better capacity in dealing with it, also prevention dynamics. Next year, we're going to come back with hopefully a whole lot more, like I said, grassroots information that will give us the ability to expand, especially on new programming initiatives that may not even yet exist this year, that could be an opportunity to invest into next year, to continue to make even deeper impact into what is, according to the child report you see in front of you, or the information you see in front of you, the number one health concern within McDowell County, which is substance misuse. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Angela and let her break down a little more of what you see in front of you. We appreciate it, thank you.
Hello. I am not only new to this role, but I'm new to McDowell County. We moved here in April of 2020, so obviously I was in COVID for a year and a half, so I've only really been in McDowell for six months, out in the land of the living. But I'm happy to be here, excited for this opportunity. I came from Stokes County, worked with the county commissioners there as a mental health coordinator. I've spent the last 10 to 12 years at Wake Forest School of Medicine and Public Health Sciences as a project manager for different research studies. Worked in public health for about 12 years as a health educator, working with communities, trying to get the community to get involved with whatever we wanted to address, which is a passion of mine. And also worked in mental health and social services, which I'm telling my age, but that is really and truly my heart, because I've worked with families who had substance use issues. And I'll just, I always tell everybody this, I'll tell you guys too, my first love is Child Protective Services. And that is the reason I took this job, is thinking maybe I can make a greater impact on a broader scale, because when I did that work before, 90% of the families I worked with had substance use issues. And when we're talking about substance use, we're talking about children that are affected, we're talking about families in the community, everybody's affected at some point, whether it's a neighbor, or a cousin, or a spouse, or my son played football, there were so many guys that were issued in Stokes County. And so this is near and dear to my heart. So that's just a little bit about me. Sorry, I can ramble too. So as far as the Task Force, my role really is to let you guys see that we're working really hard as a community. And people have been so proud of me to collaborate with me already. I'm still learning the ropes, I've been here six months, so learning the ropes. But it is certainly a public health crisis. And the Community Health Assessment, which I'm very familiar with, and I'm sure you guys are too, is something that the Health Department does every three or four years, I think it's every three years now. But their two top health priorities were substance use and mental health. And you know, that speaks volumes. You know, we have heart disease and other issues as well, but those were two top priorities for the Community Health Assessment. So really, and Danny touched on it a little bit already, is you know, the money that we got from Dogwood Health Trust Fund will allow us to get the community involved, get their voice, and help them to identify what they see the needs are to address this problem and potential solutions to the problem. Because when you involve the community in issues, that's when you can make progress. They've got to buy into it, they've got to say, oh yeah, they're working for us, and hopefully they can give us ongoing input. But that Dogwood Health Trust Fund will give us the qualitative data that we need that supports those numbers quantitative in the Community Health Assessment. So both of those things really and truly are equally important. So we do have a staff with Dogwood Health Trust Funds. We have four community liaisons that are part-time, and then we have a full-time person with lived experience that's a support, administrative planner, click this, click title. And we're already working together and organizing these focus groups and hope to start the focus groups June the 1st. So we're hoping to get some of that data right away. And I always believe in sharing preliminary data as we go along, so that we can keep people abreast on what we're trying to do and what our update is and that kind of thing. The options A and B, just you guys already know all this, but as a reminder, you know, the opioid settlement funds, they're pretty specific on what we're allowed to use the funds for. So we've just got to, as a community, decide where are the top priorities, where can we, what's the word, get the most bang for the buck, or whatever. But you know, there's option A, and there's option B. If you want to look at that, I mean, I'll just briefly talk about it. Because that's what we're looking at, when we make our recommendations, certainly we'll be looking at this. And then as Danny said, once we get data from the focus groups and the surveys that we will be doing, we will come back again and say, hey, this is what the community is saying. And you know, could be a lot of changes between now and the next nine months of what we actually find out about this crisis. So option A is more high-impact strategies. And I will say, most people understand the meaning and the importance of evidence-based practices. So the things that are listed here, based on science, these are supposed to actually make a difference. So just stressing that with option A, as you look at those. And being new to the community, I've already heard a few things here and there, but we'll save that for later, I'm sure you guys hear it as well. But that's option A. And then option B is more of a collaborative, strategic planning type initiative, which is where the community liaisons and the focus groups and that qualitative, that is where that will come into play as we look at option B strategies. Do y'all have any questions, or am I just, any comments or questions about that? Okay. And then, because you guys are commissioners, I know you look at other things, not just public health crises, so we'll look at the money, and that's on this purple page here. I just wanted to share, or remind you guys, that for every dollar spent, when you implement an evidence-based intervention, you can benefit $58. Does everybody see that on the purple page on the back? And if you spend a dollar on substance use disorder treatment, it saves $4 in healthcare costs. And if you spend a dollar in the criminal justice arena, it saves $7 in criminal justice cost. Not to mention impacting lives in families and children. So just want to remind you guys of, you know, however you can't say that in the long run, prevention works, treatment's effective, people can recover. But I do believe people can recover with community support as well. And one of the things the Task Force is beginning to start doing is having a campaign where we're trying to reduce stigma associated with folks who access the services from substance use for mental health. And so that's very important, that they feel supported in that, because we want everybody to recover. That's the ultimate goal. The strategic plan is very impressive, they did this long before I came, but it's very impressive. We just printed off April today, but we had a draft in December, and I will let you guys look at that at your leisure. I will say, if you could look at page 25, and this was when they came out with the Opioid Action Plan in 2017 to 2021, they did have seven priority focus areas on the bottom of page 25. And to reduce opioid addiction and overdose death, the priority focus areas are to create a coordinated infrastructure, reduce oversupply of prescription opioids, reverse, excuse me, reduce diversion of prescription drugs, influent illicit drugs, increase community awareness and preventions, make Narcan widely available, and link overdose survivors to care, expand treatment recovery-oriented systems of care, and improving access to services, I added that, but it's still the same. Measure impact and revise strategies based on results. So that was the preliminary beginning focus priorities with these opioid settlement funds. So that's one thing I wanted to stress, and I think we're along the same lines when we're also focusing on option A and B. The other handouts, any questions? I know that's kind of lengthy, but if you think of any questions, some of you are already on my email, I sent it to lots of people I haven't met yet. A lot of you have my cards in my pocket, they've got a Gmail card if anyone called and asked me something. Let's see. I did put in here the Substance Use Task Force, we used to be the coalition, and they voted to change the name to Task Force. We've got our mission in believing that recovery is possible. All of that information's on this page. And I just wanted to take just a second, if you live in McDowell County at all, and you guys are much more aware of McDowell County needs than I am, because I am totally brand-new, but just living in this community and watching television, the fentanyl is a very, very new, well, it's not so new, but what's happening now is we're finding it laced into other drugs that people are using, and they have no idea this is what was going on, and people are just dying. And if you can see from this bright yellow and black handout, fentanyl is actually 50 times stronger than heroin. And it's 100 times stronger than morphine. It is used pharmaceutically when needed, but what's happening is people are getting hold of it and putting it in things. And you know, just because of the role that I have, I hear all kinds of stories like every day, and I'm like, wow, this is so new. I mean, I've been around a long time, and I've never seen, I don't know, it just seems to be bigger than maybe any issues we've dealt with in the past. And so I feel like we need to bump up our game a little bit, because it's taken lives. There's some really good information, this is from the CDC about fentanyl and what it's doing. And then last but not least, I have no idea how long I've talked, but last but not least, there's a graph here from McDowell County. These are the latest statistics, and that's why I pulled it. Because when you look at the State Center for Health Statistics, the latest they have is 2019. We've had a lot of things change since 2019, so we're trying to keep abreast of what's really going on. But what I wanted to share too with the graph, the numbers look, you know, you see 2, 5, 2, 2, 1, 1, that looks kind of low. Well, when you add all those numbers, if you haven't already done it, that's 62 people. So 62 people in the last 12 months have been in the ER as a result of an overdose. And 13 of those 62 were fentanyl. And you can see how that bumped up in February, and I think March is going to be bigger than that, especially for fentanyl. So I just wanted you to see a graph, so you could see a visual of what we're dealing with. Now, when you look at based on 2021, the numbers look very similar, which tells me we're not getting anywhere, but I just think there's an urgency with this. And I just, I just look forward to working with you guys and partnering with you guys and just, you know, if there's anything, the Task Force, any kind of questions, anything we can work on, I would like to see a partnership, because you guys are the leadership, ultimate leadership, and we just really hope that we can work closely with you guys to help the families living in McDowell County.
Based on the information that, you know, we hear on the news, the issue with fentanyl, most of that, from what I understand, is coming across our borders from China and...
That's what the news says, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I think it's a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, to continue to fight that as much as possible. And also, as I said, we do appreciate the Dogwood Health Trust making this kind of investment into our community and what purpose you guys have, and we appreciate y'all for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, first, I'd like to welcome you to McDowell County. You'll find that you might be down there in Stokes.
Well, I'm going to do one where I came from, but my husband wanted...
You'll change your mind in just a few years.
My husband wants to retire, legal law cabinet, so that's what we're doing, and it's very nice.
We're glad you did.
Thank you so much.
Danny, County Manager, you and he can get together and work out the dates. That would be great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Okay, next, under performance, it's I'm the long time, long time Fire Department Public hearing, we have, I think it's Mr. William Keller here to lead us up on that.
Good evening. Thanks for having us to present this evening. From time to time, we evaluate district lines and jurisdictional lines for various organizations and emergency services. The proposal you have in front of you tonight is based upon some growth in the eastern part of McDowell County, specifically the Hankins and Nevo Fire Department District. North Carolina General Statute allows for the service district lines to be adjusted, and there's a process that we are following to adjust, or the proposal is to adjust these lines to ensure operational readiness and response for a department that is closer to these locations would be the primary department that would respond. So we have, in the Hankins District, proposed shift to the physical preserve development. The actual entrance is in Burke County. We're looking at a significant amount of road miles from the Hankins District that it's currently in, and the proposal is to shift primary response to the Longtown Fire Department. In the Nevo Fire Department, we're looking at the 1780 development, there are certain parcels of property that need to be adjusted in that development that are currently in McDowell, but you have to run into Burke County off of some of the side roads and come back down to these properties, and it's served much closer and faster by the Longtown Fire Department. We also have the Enclave Development, which is off Lake James Road, this is a development that has come into play since the fire district was initially developed years ago. So for the Hankins Development, we're looking at physical preserve and enclave, and then for Nevo, we're looking at the 1780. All of the fire departments working prior up to this, up to tonight's presentation, we have communicated with all of the fire departments involved in this change in service districts, and all the departments are in agreement, they have both, or all three have taken this in front of their board of directors. We have letters from the two local departments understanding that that tax revenue will shift to the Longtown Fire Department, you're in there, agreement with that. And I'll furnish wood for the other items and things.
So you have a hearing tonight, it's been advertised in the newspaper, and after that hearing, so choose to do, you can accept the recommendation of staff in the requested departments and implement that change effective July 1st.
I would also add the mutual aid responses. So Nevo, along with Hankins Fire Department, would still respond to these locations for structural fires. As a mutual aid department, we're simply changing the order of the primary department. In this county, we have four department dispatches of structural fires, and sure we have enough manpower and equipment on scene, and that's consistent with the process in the eastern part of the county, along with Longtown as well.
Is there a way to enhance service for the rest and quick response, so y'all knew the details, it's not my fault, the departments have signed off on it, so I appreciate the collaboration, I think y'all have had a little work.
Great. Now, I will head and declare some public hearings standing according to General Statute, according to General Statute 1538-3043, we are in public hearings. Any comments? Anyone out here have any comment? Not by your motion, but by...
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? I'll play with say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are back here.
Mr. Chairman, my question, approve of the two service district adjustments as recommended by staff?
Any discussion on that?
Discussion question, how will the fire tax be handled as far as their fire taxes in McDowell County, is it going to be taxed out of Longview?
Yes. It's collected by our staff that translates. We're currently doing that now.
I felt that this is really consistent of how we've changed some districts. Little Switzerland, Apple Valley community, you have to go Hall Town Road near Walmart in Mitchell County, and then it turns back into McDowell, along with Highway Cakers, Crook Creek, and all the other counties.
And that's for today, to understand that's the fire tax, now the property tax stays in McDowell.
Okay, we have a motion, second. I'll play with say aye.
Aye.
And, yes. Thank you, Mr. Keller. Next on the agenda is the Gateway Wellness Health Development. We have Mr. Newbury with us here tonight, we always welcome him.
Thank you, Sharon Brown, I love you, I'm your pal, it's nice. You know, the last time I actually, I just think the last time we spoke was Carson House, and so I'll be all over the place. What was interesting is at Carson House, I spoke about the fact that we wanted to do exactly what we're talking about tonight, is build more single-family homes in the area and make that possible. So I know you have been sent to your bank for formal recommendation, I'm going to just walk through this, sort of a bit more fun to look at, and explain to you where you are. On the first page of this is really, at some point, if you have the time, I'd love to present the Dogwood Health Study, the housing study, it's a point of blank study, but I can condense it down to a little bit less than that. And really, it focuses on each county, but so each county comes out particularly, and we can show you exactly what's happening, where the housing shortage is, who the shortage is with, both age, income-wise, areas, et cetera. It's a really, really good snapshot look at what's happening across the county in terms of housing. The short summary is that is housing need is everyone, there's an absolute shortage of housing across the entire county. But 40% of that need is seniors. I know you did a great senior study, and glad to say that we are trying to do a lot more towards seniors, because a large portion of that housing is senior need as well. The gap is about 1,200 units in the rental houses, rentals or purchased houses. You jump to the next page, you see the breakdown, 715 of those are rental units, so a large number of rental units needed from every income range. This is not a low-income only, this is income range from low income all the way top, to the top end of the income. And owned houses, it's saying about 400, maybe owned houses that are needed. That's just to get us to break even, that's not to put us there, that's just the gap that's in the market at the moment. So it's a huge need. In fact, one of the biggest counties in the area is McDowell and Rutherford County, have some of the largest housing needs across the western North Carolina counties. And we flip to the next page, you'll see what causes, what that causes. The rental vacancy rate, they've found a lot of all the different people that rent and asked them if they have rentals, and there's a zero rental data threat, should be 5%, which means that anywhere you can rent in this county is if you know somebody who's moving out. That's the only way you're going to rent something, you'll never get a rental otherwise. And just as bad is available for sale rate, which is really the numbers of houses in the area divided by the number, numbers for sale divided by the number of houses in the area should be at 3%, setting at less than 1%, almost even below 1%. Meaning, there are just no houses available for sale. If you do that in the lower house market, say to below $200,000 or $250,000, that triples, there's just about nothing, that number comes down at 1%. A lot of those houses that were sold over the high-income bracket there is $500,000. So, short answer is, and this is straight out of their study, housing need is massive, doesn't matter where it is that you look at it, we focus largely on... that you look at it. We focus largely on what we call workforce housing, which is anyone earning from about $29,000 to about $50,000. That's the focus area. That's entry level for almost every single area that we work with, and that's good workforce housing. We have one, if you go to this page, we, I think the last time I spoke to you, I had some pictures in there, what we were getting to. It's now done. This is the house in West Wilhelmina. The city donated the land trust. We built the house. It's a three-bedroom home. We only work with the USDA loan program. What that means and why we work with that. So not only do we build the house, we actually do the loan for the individual through USDA. We actually have a loan consultant. We do the loan. USDA loans are subsidized. You can go out to 46,800 on the USDA loan. They subsidize it within that. So this particular house is a three-bedroom home. The price of the house is $170,000. It's going to have a $630 mortgage. That's all for the subsidization of that. The person buying it earns $30, $30 and $0.20 an hour. That's the actual settlement. And that's a household income. We can have thirteen people earning a dollar, and they can all 13 buy the house. USDA will allow you to do that. So if a couple buying a house, or two friends buying a house, earning seven, eight, or $10 each, absolutely getting into a house. It's not an impossible task. We're going to go around to, once we start on this program, if we manage to get this through, and there's a lot more houses coming, we're going to go to factories to propel through the areas, go and talk to the church and areas, and reach people who think it's impossible to get into a house. Other than that, USDA, there's no down payment. So you get into this house, no down payment, and you're paying $630, and this is actual, this person has already signed up right now, six twenty a month is what they're going to pay for to get their house.
Do you have a person that's lined up for to purchase this house?
I do have that.
You do have a person?
Yes, we have. We have. We had about seven of them, and we worked through the range. The biggest thing is, you're going to have a credit score six, forty and above, and you're going to have a reasonably good debt integration. But our council will work with them on that. We find a lot of people come in with a high debt, usually a high debt more than a house, and we can work with them to, you know, clean up by the way they did. About twenty percent of the people that we talk to qualify immediately. The other eighty percent we work with. And the reverse happens. Once you've worked them for six to eight months, eighty percent of the people qualify for the houses at the time. It's a great, and you know, the nice thing is, we've got tract of land and not just one house. You can help people choose their location. Say, you're going to have a house up here, and we're going to build you that. You can choose that house. You can choose that house style. You can choose the interior fittings. It's a great motivation to clean up your credit, to get your debt right, to actually know that you can actually get into a house. And of course, it's incredible work for the. So, in the yellow, this is literally from the last presentation I've had, so we want to do more of these. So I want to talk about more of these now, what we've worked with. Banks Avenue, I'm sure you're intimately aware of Banks Avenue, and because I know you're very involved with it, with Ashdale's are involved in that. So we actually purchased Banks Avenue when we went to Florida, and we picked it up about a year ago. We can't, couldn't do anything with it because it's, for the first year, it's got a title challenge. Anybody can shout out the title. And that year ended literally last month, so we can do something with Banks Avenue at the moment. And that's what we'd like to do. We'd like to convert Banks Avenue into a neighborhood, and from, you know, a band trailer park into a complete neighborhood. The pictures here, this is Banks Avenue. This is quite an important picture, a large one. You'll see that the land slopes downhill. And that's quite important because where it says Morganton Road, that's where the sewer will eventually run, and the landslide from Morganton Road all the way down, which means one house in, you don't get sewer, and we'd have to put septic tank behind that. So that's a key part of what we, why we want to ask, and why we come to you today, to see if you can assist us with some of this, to get more houses onto that, that much. The next is, next is actually what we're doing. That's a site plan for the area. These are real pictures of the real houses, well, of all the plans. We have site, we have about fifteen different plans. We can do two and three versions at the moment. That's what they will look like. This is not a fictitious photograph or Google. These are taken straight off our plans.
Do you have any work in Rutherford County?
We have thirty-one houses going in Rutherford County.
Okay.
Of exactly the same thing. And that's what we said we wanted to do. We managed to get land in Rutherford, and then we just were trying to find something. We thought Banks would be ideal. That's a perfect piece of land for that, for there. So that's really what the vision is. If you get to the next page, it's the ask, and we would like some assistance in this. What created the problem is the fact that we can actually build, if we just put the water and sewer down the main road, we can get ten houses in there without a problem at all. No hassle, we can put that in. Unfortunately, sewer is not right on the property. Sewer is sitting quite a few streets down at the moment. Water is just over the road. We need to bring sewer all the way up and then down the property. But we need to add a sewer pump. The sewer pump alone is $150,000, and this is just pushing the price. And the way we work is, we analyze the cost of the land into the purchase of the house, and we get it to a place where the house is no longer for arrangement. And we're trying to see if we can get some partnership going on that. And what we're asking for is a partnership that we've done before with you and with the city. We, we go very unusually, compared to the other county, actually work together with the city. And we've spoken to Bob Boyet and Ashley as well, and said, you know, if the city and county can come in and help us with some of that sewer cost, what we're asking for is $60,000 from each. We can analyze it over three years, so we can split it into a three-year payment, so it's not actually all coming out of this year, and you can plan for it. We can also take the first one in July, because it's going to, we'll only start breaking ground about this, and actually work with you next year. But if you can help us with that, we can come in for the rest of the money. We've spoken to Dogwood. They will match what the city and county put in, and we will get that out of that as well. We will end up, with our board and Dogwood, and yourselves and the city, we'll be able to actually put in twenty-six houses into that area, single-family homes into that area. Just for fun, the last page is really just saying what we're trying to do. I'll give you a timeline, and the bottom left is actually what it used to look like, and what we'll turn it into.
We'll remember that.
Exactly. I'm sure you're intimately remember that. So timeline roughly, we can get funding sorted out in April, which we can, if we, I'm meeting with the city next week on Tuesday. I'm meeting at Dogwood on the nineteenth, so if we can get all the funding sorted out in April. Plans take about two months. By June, we'll have plans sorted out. We didn't put them out to bids. Interestingly, the one that we're doing in Rutherford County, Sugar Hill, Sugar Hill Contractors are doing it, which is the McDowell contractor, Fay is doing that one, which is great. So we end up, I'm pretty sure he'll win this bid as well, so we'll end up using Fay for this one as well. So bids in July. We put bids out to everyone. You can tell us, anybody that you've got on the list will get bids. We'll get, we'll go to G and we'll go to anyone who's out there in the county, in this county in particular, to see if we can get that. And try and keep all the workforce happening from this.
That's where we work for this.
Yeah. As I say, even though that one, it's funny that even Sugar Hill won one up there, their prices are really good. So I'm pretty sure Fay and his team will sell this one out to you. We'll break down in August, and it's about four to five months. It's not a major for us. We're going to put in a main road, water and sewer systems. We're not asking city or county to do any of the infrastructure. We'll put it all in, which is really asking for funding to help us with that and get it into place. And then finally, in January, we'll start building the houses. As you know, we do modular. The first house will probably arrive in February or March. It'll be out of the, by April, this, a year from now, somebody will be moving into that house from there. Well, not that. We build them two at a time, so we do two every month. That's me. I'm hoping you all.
Yeah, that's a very reasonable request. Very reasonable.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that you're taking a problem and turning it into a very positive, and to have your plan to have twenty-six houses in there, as a, if you look at it purely dollars and cents, we're taking vacant land and receiving the tax benefit off that at the rate, but we can look at twenty-six houses and provide, and help meet the need of over a thousand houses needed in McDowell County already, so we're helping to meet the need there, but also to protect the taxpayer by increasing the revenue, offset costs, to keep costs low in McDowell.
And it'll raise the value of that whole area. I mean, that's a really nice area, but it really will.
Raise the value of that neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's nice, it's built as a neighborhood, so it feels like a neighborhood is going to have, you know, it's going to have, you know, all those, all those neighbors have, so you feel like you're actually in a neighborhood as opposed to a random house dropped in somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to go ahead and further request it.
Say a good motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? On the page say aye.
Aye.
I love you guys.
Yeah, we appreciate you, and I appreciate, again, what Dogwood has done for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Next is I don't need on the agenda, the YMCA update, and we have Mr. Toby Rankin here, and I think Keith wants to introduce someone, feel.
Possibly. Now, Howard, do you already have the packet in front of you? Does he mail that? Does he make it hard to? I would like to introduce someone, but it's not. Well, thank you for having the platform from YMCA to be able to come in and give you an operational update. A little bit more than just an operational update, and give you a little bit of insight of some of the things that we are doing. And then, at the end, I'd like to urge you, and propel a sense of urgency in regards to childcare and legislation in your influence. I'm going to go straight to our YMCA mission pages, number three on your packet. Our mission is to put Christian principles into practice, into programs, and build the spirit, mind, and body for all. And I don't know if you remember, we just celebrated nineteen years last month, and when we first opened, there was a logo, an insignia, and it was a triangle, and the triangle was sitting on its, the fulcrum, at a balance. And so we add that balance, continue of spirit, mind, and body through the YMCA. We do that through health, we do that through childcare, we do that through nutrition, we do that through all the outreach inside of the facility and outside of it. I want to take the time to thank you, coming in and out of COVID, your, your extension of assistance as challenges that I have to add by the Board of Education, they matched. You and others stepped in and stepped up from your community YMCA to ensure that the doors are operation, and really, more importantly, the impact of the outreach was able to continue flawlessly. I want to introduce or just highlight, when you just raise your hand, YMCA advocates, staff, and volunteers that are in the room tonight. Thank you for being here. We have advisory, long-term advocates and supporters, and staff, and new staff, so thank you for being here. I see Jed Rankin in the back. Last month, we corporate and center board, and the YMCA came together and said, we need to ensure that we highlight, elevate, and show off the leadership that it took to get the YMCA to the point that it is today. And that's Jed Rankin sitting back there. And we can't do our work without YMCA volunteer. We are a volunteer organization, and that's extremely important for us. Partnerships are key to us, service in the community. And I'll add, private-public partnerships are, I believe, a smart way to be able to boot business, and in my past, also to govern. Public-private partnerships are key. One creates another one, and then you can actually get three out of that because of the partnerships and the potential that's in front. Our common denominator, I believe, and I shared this with Mr. Brown, and that is the citizens of McDowell. We serve, we serve them, both of them, both of us serve them. And that's an active and healthy McDowell. I'm going to go into the next slide, the local impact of youth development. We began operating the after-school program from the school systems in 2017. As you may recall, coming into COVID, that funding was sunsetting. COVID hit, it was a perfect storm. Again, individuals, corporations, grants leaned in to help us bridge that gap. In 2020, we launched Horizon's Middle School Program. That is a grant-funded program from a Twenty-First Century Grant, and that's in a partnership with the McDowell School System. So middle schoolers have an opportunity for free after-school care and come to the YMCA. Ideally, those are in the school systems and will be into the middle schools, and we'll be moving that back there as well. They also were able to offer free summer day camp for middle schoolers, Monday through Thursday. Rafting and Zip Line, there are a couple things that are on the agenda this morning. So thank, thank underserved, underprivileged, served, privileged, coming together to be able to share and be with role models that have expertise in that age group. And if you remember that age group, it's, it's, it's not a fun age, and they need that role model. You know, last year, in regards to partnerships, the school system came to the YMCA and said, we would like support in our, our summer school enrichment, and we provided this education for them. We had kids come into the YMCA to do SOF, which is Safety Care Around Water, which is very similar to the splash program that we're already working with the school system on. And we also went to schools, and actually Brad, Brad Bradley back here, he was one of the core leaders for that, and was able to keep kids active. So it's a testament to the ability, again, for partners to be able to come together and share, share and promote. Developing leaders, i.e. workforce development, is key. It is on the front of my long-term vision and agenda of working through the YMCA. We help develop the workforce, and we start that in after-school, and we follow through with that in summer day camp. And that moves into mentoring and volunteering, such as in our soccer program, where we're developing a leadership program, or have developed, beginning to implement a leadership program for young youth, high school students, to be able to volunteer there. And they'll put that on a volunteer resume for the school system, and into moving forward, going into college admissions. So that's something that we're proud of. And intentional mentoring initiatives that we're working on now, but I'd like to come back at some time and be able to unveil that and share that with you. Move on to the local impact, healthy living. Right now, we've got about 3,800 members in the YMCA, 400 county, McDowell County kids in sports swim camp programs, and about 60 in chronic disease programs, such as taking control of type-two diabetes and Parkinson's, to name a couple. We're watching those demographics, what we've seen through COVID. Before COVID, our, our senior population, those members, were at about thirteen percent of our membership, and that's grown to about 25 percent. So that's a, that's a population that is coming into the YMCA to get healthy, utilizing their, their insurance program primarily to be able to do that. We've seen households, family households, take a little bit of a dip. And so we're looking out into, into the environment, to be able to see how can we reach more families to be able to get them into YMCA. And we know that pandemic and workforce could be a little bit of an ingredient in that. However, we are doing those, that research. We had a strategic planning process that was led by our CEO, Paul Best. Ms. Vaughn was a part of that on our Zoom. We did that with the advisory board. We've done that across western North Carolina. And one thing that resounded in our, in our Zoom that Ms. Vaughn was a part of, was teen, teamwork, teen investment. And that's not a story that the YMCA and communities all over have not heard before. We have to invest in our teams. And that was resounding throughout western North Carolina, and you will see that needle become moot as we become intentional about teamwork. And as I've shared in previous, previous slides, our efforts to be able to do that, specifically with soccer program, and volunteer coaches, and the joint program. Oh, make sure I get our highlights here. I, going down to that last number, sixty people with cancer, diabetes prevention, Parkinson's, and I don't know if you noticed, during COVID, we launched in the state, the first virtual diabetes prevention program. So YMCA is innovative. I believe we have entrepreneurial spirit, and we're well over 200, 250, over 250 years old YMCA movement?
Since 1844.
And then we've been here in western North Carolina since 1889. So the culmination of that, and the intentions of growing the community and not focusing on ourselves, is one of the reasons why we're where we are. And we appreciate your support as we do that. We'll go down into local impact and social responsibility. Financial assistance, everyone who comes to our doors has an opportunity to be able to obtain financial assistance. I have recognized over the past six months, and still, I have recognized over the past six months, and still articulate the value that we bring to the community. Each and every one of you have a value. Your operation here has value, the YMCA has a value, our programs have a value, the Splash program has a value, and it's important for individuals to know what that value is, it's an investment. What separates us in that value is everyone has an opportunity to be able to take advantage of that value. We don't turn anyone away, and therefore, we raise dollars to be able to do that, we seek grants to be able to do that. And I will, in one slide, it's not necessarily appropriate right here, I will share with you an opportunity that we have with cancer survivors with a real strong program, and that's private-public partnerships. We have nine kids going into our Camp Ati, that's a resident camp, overnight camp, that's under Bryson City, talking about swimming, ziplining, learning dynamics with kids, I might have had an opportunity to spend time with them last year, and I was impressed, no phones, books are coming in the mail from parents, they are unplugged completely, and I know that's something that's been high on my agenda coming through the YMCA, is to lessen that screen time. We have screens, but we can also teach good habits, and they're teaching those good habits there. You would be impressed with the next generation, at least the ones that I saw in the middle school cabin, you'd be impressed. This is notable for our 20 and 21-year, the Corporating Center proper and our childcare, the scholarship amounts amounted to that we were able to provide was just shy of $356,000. And so, we're going to, this is, I'm going to build up to this sense of urgency that we'll end with. Community connections, we can't do our work without volunteers, this is a little bit of a shout-out. We want our advisory to look like our community. If you know up-and-coming leaders, and that's what we're looking for, we want to change the dynamic and help leadership succession, and it starts a lot of times around our volunteer non-hendent boards, so great training ground. Career and workforce development, financial support, and advocacy, and that goes to show the advocacy that has come here tonight to show that support. So, our promises, thank you. We're going to continue to provide vital programs with the support of influencers like you in the community at large. How can you help? The number here, 41% of families in McDowell receive childcare vouchers, actually, we, that's actually 59%, and that's in our after-school program. The state provided dollars for, through grants, childcare stabilization grants, and it's a two-year grant cycle. And one of the opportunities was to increase staff wages in that, and that was increased by about 30% from $11 to $15, and that was one of the criteria within that grant. As Tim has said, the bell has rung that the investment in staff, which is absolutely necessary in our childcare, the bell has been rung, it cannot be unrung. You can't go from 15 back down to 11. So, the critical mass and the influence and the attention I'd like for you to give and share, and ask questions of us and your legislators, is what's the runway look like after, next school year, after this cycle, when the vouchers do not increase to be able to meet that demand, just in that one expense line of wages? We've got the runway, it's significant that we're able to do that, it's helping a lot of families out there, but if we don't meet that after legislation, then that will end, and we would have to go back to $11 an hour or find another revenue stream.
When does, sorry, Toby, I said timber. When does that expire, July or next year?
It runs through next academic year, so it's been the stabilization grants that Toby was referring to, and propped up the childcare sector across North Carolina, and it's really been a lifeline to, for childcare providers, and to ensure that parents can rejoin the workforce, because childcare is now available. As he alluded to, they've been covering some operating expenses, but the biggest piece was to, we couldn't staff it. All throughout western North Carolina, we've got over 200 kids on the waitlist for after-school the entire academic year, because we couldn't get staff. So, what it's done is, the average wage was between 11 and 12, now it's 15 for entry-level childcare workers. So, what we used to, our whole pre-COVID, you know, primary concern was access for, you know, the families that Neil was talking about, to childcare vouchers. But now, it's really that, you know, the, again, the, the belt that Toby's talking about, if subsidized childcare rates do not increase at about 30%, the entire childcare sector is going to tip. So, that it's a main public policy priority moving forward, as North Carolina looks at its next budget year, is what can we do to sustain this work that they've invested in the stabilization grants? So, we really need childcare reimbursement rates to increase at a minimum of 30% to cover the wage increase that's been happened as a result of these necessary steps with childcare stabilization.
So, please, your help, again, this affects our families, the 26, 26 homes are probably going to have some families in there, and they're going to be affected by this. So, the advocacy that we're asking you to bring to the table, ask us questions, ask your legislators questions, so we can ensure that we're doing our best and most due diligence to help the families. I would like to take two minutes, I'll introduce you to Brad Bradley, Brad, come up here. Brad Bradley, born and raised, I've heard that multiple times, I've been able to sit in on some commissioner meetings, that it is important that we invest in and we develop our leaders, and I say our, we live here. I'm going to let Brad Bradley introduce him, two minutes, okay? Because...
Yeah, that's absolutely right, and he's going to just highlight and pick off our speakers.
That's right. Brad Bradley, born and bred, I've volunteered with YMCA 18 years, and that's, I came through, loved soccer my whole life, and I gave the opportunity to start coaching there, through that, got into the school system, McDowell High is coach now, the varsity coach. So, I've seen the impact it has with these children coming through for 18 years, I've seen whole generations, and it's, thanks to the YMCA, it's really made a difference for these children. We had 125 last fall sign up, and that was after 18 months off from COVID. This spring, we are ballooning up to almost 250 kids. One in four of those kids are on some type of financial assistance, and so, it makes a big deal, just having those opportunities, knowing that we will not turn a child away, because we will find a way to get those financial assistance, to get those children to play, and it's made a big and positive difference, getting our numbers up and retaining the children through the middle school level and into the high school level. It used to, when I've been at the high school coaching for 10 years, 10 years ago, I have 20% of the children might have played YMCA. Now, those numbers are up, 80% of my kids are at the high school, have come up through the YMCA program, and it's made a huge difference. These kids have learned a lot of skills, and they're coming in and becoming the next leadership for us. I have, like Toby said, we're volunteer-driven, 60 to 70% of my coaches now are people that have come through the system, and it's through 18 years, I've seen, I've seen that cycle. So, I thank y'all for this time, and I appreciate everything you guys do for us, and we're here to help the community, and any support would be great, appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes, I wanted to leave him and let him stand on his own affair. I will say that he's our newest full-time YMCA employee, he's going to be over our soccer program and our youth and family, and our climbing law.
That's right. Good, we appreciate it.
And if there are questions, I'm available.
Is there interest from the board and Senate communication?
I'll make a motion that we, as staff director, the resolution in support of what we've heard of that, that be sent to our Senator in the State of Daniels and our House.
We appreciate that, definitely, as we go into, I was judging with the Senate board earlier today, that budget season in the state of North Carolina is never contentious, but I think, you know, childcare should be something that is necessary, you know, regardless of party, it should be something that will hopefully be received from that opposition. Thank you very much.
So, the motion, on, here, you have a second, you have a discussion, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, guys. Oh, one other thing, just quickly, I want to recognize Dr. Burton, thank you, Dr. Burton, for all that you do for this county, and you have been a bad west at McDowell County, just recognizing, being there, and wanted to recognize you personally. Thank you very much, Toby. Here. Okay, moving on, next one, one dope is, I'm a, American Rescue Plan, which was...
There's a couple of items here, the first item is, after your memo, there's a grant project ordinance that has been updated to reflect the allocation you made last month, who would be the broadband to talk about a little bit, so we would ask that you approve that amendment.
Make a motion to approve the amendment, please.
Second. Motion, second, you have a discussion, all the papers say aye? You have a vote.
Okay, the next item, you have, there are eight policies that have been included in your packet that are specific in distinctions to our book, that we've been asked by Treasury to put in place, and these are boilerplate pamphlets or deals to make sure that we are covered in a federal law, as you present.
Please, the board.
Say aye.
Second. Motion, second, you have a discussion, all the papers say aye?
Thank you. The next item, it's a staff request at this point, if you want to think about it, of course, it's your decision. I have completed pretty much all of the budget discussions with departments, and even before the last couple weeks, this has not been new knowledge, I guess, but one of the biggest capital items comes to the top of almost everyone's list, that has a building as far as the department, it is parking lots, driveways, anything with asphalt. We have done what we can over the years, but as you understand, you add assets, whether it's a convenience site, whether it's a driveway, a ball field, or a parking lot, and a health building, a lot of these places are just getting in bad shape, and it's, again, we do what we can, but we've got a lot of assets now. I'd like to request that we go ahead, that you grant authority, do a little bit different here than just coming up with a list and calling local paving, because we have so many lots and driveways and so forth, that maybe someone that knows what they're doing can come out and look at it and say, and we'd be able to do an RFQ for an engineer who specializes in this type of work, bring macro recommendation, that engineer would be selected, they would do the design specs, and move that advertised, with the paving after that. So, looking at a little bit different process, if you're okay with, to like the maple, the driveway, as you mentioned earlier today, it's really bad, it needs a lot of work, but we've got convenience sites that need work, and a few of the buildings, and so, we'd appreciate, you know, at least start this process, because we're not committing to spend money yet, that could be worked through, we want to spend it in a process, depending on what those look like in the budget.
Can that be worked through the budget as far as recommendations from state?
I would think so, because we could start this process, and select an engineer, and get going, and work hand-in-hand with the county's budget process, to where, if something could be done, local funds, we could do that, not, then there's ARF possibility, so this would take a while to get it going.
Would you like to move to the staff?
Make a motion, we have staff received with, as requested, and then bring back the, I want to see exactly, ask which one, and the cost per each one, and...
Or property?
That's right.
Second. Motion, second, you have a discussion, all the papers say aye? You have a vote.
Mr. Chairman, for a note, definitely, look at the shillee side, that's been brought our attention, and make sure that's reviewed as this process passes.
Yeah, they, some have been paid recently in Ninersville, and could be, but definitely we want to look at that a little more.
That all you have?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I'm a, want to pour a trail project.
Yes, sir, this is related to the, in the office, we use shorthand, in the short, EB5916, this is the NCDOT-funded freeway extension between Resistive Flex Road and Ruby Conley Road, branching off our park on Overeem Road. Again, really quick, this is state-funded and federally-funded project, and some local matching funds that has been in the works for about at least five years, and so, we were at the panel where we have worked with staff, and selected an engineer, which is McGaddams, they have put together the attached engineer proposal, it is still being reviewed by the NCDOT staff and Rondling, but what we would like to do tonight to get going, where no one's waiting on us, is that you approve this contract subject to NCDOT approval, and so, if they need to tweak, and or sentence here, or whatever, we would have that flexibility to go ahead and get going, once we get the green light tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, by the motion, we approve the contract further voiced.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, just for clarity, we want to ensure the local estimate's going to be around 4750.
And that's a, that's a different ask here, the second, that's just on the engineer.
What would be the estimate?
That was the funding you authorized, I don't know if I remember, it was about 650.
Do you have a discussion? All the papers say aye? You have a vote.
Okay, thank you. The next, really brief item related to all this, what has been prior board and current board's goal is to convince the Department of Labor, McDowell Trust Association, and others, is to connect the county's park, you know, Overeem Road, back to Phase 1 of the greenway that the city built about 10 years ago. As we all know, there's Highway 70 in between, which is a very dangerous crossing, there's the river, there's private property, there's a lot of different barriers to making that connection to where it might be easier in some other places. So, the same engineer, Dean McGaddams, they have put together a grant application to NCDOT, and this is the 4750, McDowell 750, to where 80% of the cost would be state-funded, that would study various ways to connect our second back to Phase 1, and the 20% would be what's been revenues, if it's awarded, there's no guarantee it would be, that's what through on that.
Make a motion to approve it as presented.
Say aye. Got a motion, take it, you have a discussion, all the papers say aye? You have a vote. All right. Next item C is the broadband expansion, which we would lose on.
Just wanted to do a real quick update on this, I've spoken with both Optimum and Spectrum, they're both aware and appreciative of the... I've spoken with both Opium and Spectrum, they're both aware and appreciative of the allocation you made at the last meeting to go towards the great grant application. And just a quick update on the application due date that was pushed back to May fourth by the state, I'm sure it's based on a tremendous amount of interest they've seen. And so I spoke to both Friday about this, both are working on the final details. There is a second grant. If the great grant is received by either company on benefit, to benefit McDowell County, there's still a possibility of the second grant being applied for later this year. It's called CAD, Completing Access to Broadband. A little bit of the difference there is it's mostly going to be private and county dollars and not so much very rest of state dollars. So both companies, from what I understand, would want to apply for that as well for any areas that are not awarded that have a great program. So they're working heavily to get it, all with keys crossed and eyes dotted. So just an update, but continue to keep you updated once it's submitted.
Good, make a motion with. And the build progress update, please.
Just again, updates, this building, of course, the upper level is partially occupied, as you can tell, the lower level is still scheduled to be completed in May, and at that point, all of the staff for this building will move in at one time. So this building is only being used during meetings at this point. ES headquarters on Marne Road, talked to Mr. Coe before meeting, still working through final punch list items, that building is very antsy to get moved in compared to where they are. So still working with contract architectural contractors. Service of building you authorized last month, allocating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state funds for renovation to that building. We have talked prior meetings as well as last month about starting with an HVAC replacement, since that system is about fifty years old, and starting with that and just seeing what that would do for us. So we have spoken with the mechanical engineer that worked on Hammerick on design possibilities in the last couple of weeks. Station one, you authorized them demolishing that building once it's no longer occupied anymore. We have reached out to Hollin Hammerick, who has then reached out to a sub consultant who has done parking decks, could you guys just look into that? They have done that communication. It's actually the consultant that consulted on our parking deck a couple of years ago before it was added onto, so a very regular firm. And the Garden Street parking lot, this goes back to the RFP discussion, and as well as station one, the station one side has turned into a service lot, staff are ready and looking at that side as well as the new Garden Street lot, as being part of what they were scheduled to do at all. Lots of updates, but it's all happening.
She, uh, Mr. Chairman, the shooting range, that's a big topic people are saying.
It's on here, later on.
Okay, one more. Water system project, yes, there.
So first off, you do have an action item, you have a resolution offering acceptance of the eleven million state funds, technical RFP, that's under design right now, I'd ask you to approve that.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the resolution presented.
Second. Make a motion second? Any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
The next item, an update to last month, you did direct staff to look into the feasibility of receiving a grant to serve the West Marion Elementary area with water. I had a lot of conversations with the engineer, did a lot of evaluation of the point scoring system, and honestly, it's a hundred point scale, but it scored less than, I think it was around twenty-three points out of a hundred, due to a lot of factors of not having negative wells and failing systems like some areas elsewhere in the state. As I told the chairman, so we would recommend applying in the spring round, we would recommend trying to build up a case for the fall round, and looking for other situations to where it might make more sense than it does currently. So as I told the chairman earlier, I don't give up easily, especially when it comes to infrastructure, so would likely keep working on that. Staff, including myself, Mr. Foister, we do like to not just create unnecessary work for ourselves around here, but we do like to grasp opportunities from there, especially for infrastructure. So we did identify, based on some automatic tests that we would receive, due to some census tract information, to apply for a water line grant for the Hoppy Town Hollow Road neighborhood. This is about an eight, nine hundred thousand dollar grant that would be applied for, and the grand scheme is relatively small compared to about the, I think it's about three hundred and fifty million available to the state. There are some water supply issues on that road, and we could do a week or so of some testing, just to verify that information. So we recommend trying this in the spring, build out some our customer base in that area.
Other regional locations in the area that have other issues such as the bottom tower?
This seemed to be, in that area, that would score those automatic points, the lowest hanging fruit. We're not aware of any other issues that might be out there beyond what's already being studied for expansion. And so if something came up between now and the fall round, it would be a little bit short timing now, but we could all also grab it out in the fall.
I would really like to see it lined up and we go with you.
I, Mr. Chairman, I sit and scratch my head. You know, I know, I appreciate the staff willing to try to maximize any opportunity for free money, but we do have to go out there and, and I know, we know people go there still, and they tend to bring their own water.
Based on the testing that's been provided from the school system, we had to look at all these sorts of things through the application process, what's being tested and presented to the state is a better picture.
Okay, leave that alone then. The number of residences that, that was part of our discussion we had, and really the customer base, which the state says we, that finance may sell sufficient, and so we need customers, and, and there's, there's a lot of potential out there in that area, as the chairman said, we believe, across forty, going that direction, that, that I think we need to explore sooner than later. Just one person speaking.
Yeah, I don't want to abandon that idea, but I think it would be very important. And I think that Mr. Wood has been clear on his reasoning today, you know, it's based on the point system, and the points just don't add up at this pick of time, unless we can bring something else into it that we're unaware of. But, you know, we can still keep working at it and trying to come up with a way to make this happen. But, you know, right now, we just worry.
The suggestion might be, is, this might be my opinion, maybe engineers or maybe limited, but I feel like you might be wasting the time and effort and money to apply with West Marion area at this point, but to maybe do, do some more testing in the area to try to find, I hate to find bad issues, but in the way we like the mine that sounded really bad, to where we have found issues going back historically, and done a lot of good Sherwood Forest, comes to the mine, and other places where we have done testing and found really bad stuff, but that's all. But it helps us so much get these grants, and we score really poorly right now with what we know when we've gone. So we would have to build up, and maybe September would give us some more time to...
With, with a former app, the Jett Garden, there was a, I think this was a Jett Garden, sort of located at the school.
That's right, might possibly have a little more time.
There's a joint committee that needs, if you don't mind, to bring up the issues that the school system has with both septic and water out there, because it is a...
Septic has been...
The septic and water, because of the, because of the issues of the previous history of the scrap.
I would, at this point, I just think that they might have thought they'd buy a staff and continue to grow it in that area and see what kind of information they can come up with.
We don't give up.
Are you okay endorsing the Hoppy Town? Make a motion, go ahead and move forward with the bottom top.
Second. Got a motion second? I'm not ready with it. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
You vote. Next on the agenda, Parks and Recreation Center, Mr. Wood.
Updates, unless you have more, shooting range, I was talking about a second ago. We're, we've been, Mr. Marsh and his staff, honestly, but also clients and others are working really hard to get all the final details, staffing is in place, but there's cash registers and computers and cameras and things, getting all these things ordered and installed, to where within the next couple of weeks, we will be able to have our training on site and some software. We are scheduling a grant opening for early May, and so we're hopeful, based on information we've received for a while, that they will have speakers come out for that as well. So when the, the official opening date is there, we will make sure it's plastered social media, traditional media, everywhere else, people will definitely know all about it.
And then when we are...
We, we go back in history, maybe not to...
It's like Hawaii.
This effort started in twenty sixteen by a couple of you folks that were here. And I know Chairman Brown literally took us by the horns and wrangled it together here, so advise Chairman Walker to be along for all of us along the way too. Back in twenty eighteen, we had the first hearing about this, about the sound of this. Sometimes it takes a lot of time to get good things going, but I'm very excited about it.
We went around and shot a lot of the damage on the...
Mr. Harmon, I'm sure it's how long it is too. Recreation Center projects, talk about this last month, Mr. Marsh and I met with our architect, Hollin Hammerick, Cleveland County, a couple of weeks ago, to see some of the sites they worked on that were, they're maybe similar in some ways to what we'd like to do here. So they are working drawings based on prior, if you've been in comments from that day, to hopefully have something for too long also. Is the ball field, the grounds, parking, driveway, as well as the...
And pool.
And pool, that's right. And I just want to mention in Mapleby's Playground and Picnic Shelter project, we have started to submit some small grant applications that are out there, and so we'll continue to do that. These are private grants, but we have looked, as mentioned in the memo, the society has looked at a state grant that is not due to the fall, but we've got maybe an early, early heads up on the playground. So really trying to get a more bank for our money out of that. So just updates, Frank.
And one thing to share too, with, with the start of Little League, to camp the partnership with the county of Little League, they had, there were seven hundred and twenty kids signed up to that, and Mr. Marsh sent all his data, and so four other areas, towns located in the Little League program, had maybe four hundred descent total within four of the communities and counties, whereas we had seven hundred. It was a smashing success, and hats off to Little League and, and our staff for putting on a great show and a good end product for the kids. See the kids out there in the uniforms and, and the names of these Little League teams and this suit, Seabiscuit and, you know, these crazy names, and the kids had a good time. And sure, there's some growing pains because parking, getting in and out, and, but they worked through it, but it is a great thing for Little League to help them.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, a new bid is automated, National County Government Fund, Mr. Wood.
As you said, this is National County Government Fund, and this is something that MECO has been building in the National Association of Halleys for several decades now. It's a little bit of an opportunity for counties, including ours, to highlight the good that we do every day. I was having a conversation with Mr. Gilbert today about, sometimes people aren't aware of what counties do, and I'm not going to take forty-five minutes to talk about it, of course, but it's beyond, you know, our uniformed emergency service and honored people that we all know and love, like at the sheriff's office in the U.S., so our, other entities out there. And so we're taking an opportunity, staff this month, to highlight a lot of them on social media, press releases and things. So we do have a proclamation asking you to...
Good. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. Motion second? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Adam May, Child Safety Specialty Plan.
Thank you. You heard about this at your DSS meeting last month, I'll probably brief about it. This is a plan that will be implemented by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for Medicaid. And so currently, children that are foster care, they're bought into care, and they're automatically enrolled in Medicare, I'm sorry, Medicaid. And the way that is worked, since the creation of Medicaid probably, is that it's just Medicaid, that's all it's been known as. The last couple of years, the state's been doing Medicaid transformation to where Medicaid and RFPs have a choice of the providers, you might Blue Cross, you might WellCare, they're all about the same in a way, but they offer a little bit different services and different providers than one another. Foster care is, was purposely left out of that original transformation goal, with something in mind, I guess, by the department to do a little bit different plan. And so what they proposed is to do a statewide plan, called what you see there, Child Halleen Specialty Plan, to where one vendor would get the contract to administer the specialty Medicaid plan for the entire state. So, you know, it might be Blue Cross, it might be WellCare, it might be United Healthcare, someone like that is typically will get the plan. So there's a lot of concern about that for folks that live in this world, so like a VIA Health is our LME MCO. Right now, for a child that is in foster care, that is, that is more of a challenging case, we'll say that might require hospitalization, might require a level, level of care, especially home. Right now, VIA does care management for that child. If this is implemented, Blue Cross, United Healthcare, a private company like that would be responsible for care management. So there's a lot of concern, it would also be a statewide entity based out of Raleigh, Chapel Hill, New York City, wherever else. There's concern that we've got a system right now, while not perfect, we know it and it's maybe better than the alternative. So VIA and the other LME MCOs have asked counties to reach out to the department and just say, can we just take a breather? But also, maybe let's improve what we've got if there's issues, people like VIA are closer to home, and so they have sent a... People like Vaya are closer to home, and so they sent a letter to maybe approve tonight. Mr. Allison is on the regional advisory board for Vaya, home of the board itself. The regional advisory board and the board have sent letters to the secretary expressing threats for more or less consistent.
So is just sending letters or legislators and door slides?
So, and what you're saying is you prefer regionalization versus one statewide? It makes sense.
And as a statewide, one of Vaya's main concerns was a child might be relocated anywhere in the state.
State.
In a way, it's a fair way to say it.
Any other discussion? All the folks say aye. Thank you very much. Next item C, administrative values, Mr. Wood, please.
Yes, sir. I'll be really quick on this. You have a resolution for the firearm advantage for retiring deputy...
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Any discussion? All the folks say aye.
You have our EMS manuals asked to approve this.
Make a motion to approve, start again.
Make a motion to approve this present.
Second. Make a motion, second. Discussion, all the folks say aye.
April is Child Abuse and Neglect Awareness Month. That explains the blue pinnacles all over town. People wear it blue early in the month. Director Srouse has asked you to approve the attached...
Second. Any discussion? All the folks say aye.
The next item is a resolution for the financing of the 2023 Ford ambulance. I see the purchase price there. The financing is for four years, a rate of two point several percent.
Hats off to SAD for getting it forward.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Make a motion, second. Any other discussion? All the folks say aye.
In case anyone doesn't want to redo what we're on. So the, you have a project budget ordinance amendment for the Stacyville Road Waterline project as well as one for courthouse projects.
We've looked at that. Any other... Discussion, all the folks say aye.
And lastly, you have budget amendments GF thirty-five through S...
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for GF thirty-five through GF forty-four and ENT three and S twelve.
Second. Any discussion? All the folks say aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Wood. Next on the agenda, D, tax matters, Mr. Wood.
You have a couple of discoveries there, a few, a couple of releases, refunds, et cetera, asked for you to approve.
A few of these.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve it again.
Second. Make a motion, second. Any discussion? All the folks say aye. So next, there's a mini board of ones, we've got a first reading, first board of ones, right?
This is the second reading for the JC PC, the Juvenile Child Prevention Council. And this one's been very, a lot of activity, and I'm still receiving some applications, so I'd like to hold it until next month, so you can give me a call and make a decision. But the Agricultural Advisory Board would like to reactivate. They have not been active in the last several years, so they would like to reactivate. So I'll zip it as a first reading and take applications for that board.
Please, board.
We have my witness, Mr. Seig.
Did you ask for it? Okay. All right. Proceed by consensus, I would say proceed. Next, we have some comments. If you're anyone here wishing to speak, another... Make a motion, staff and board, you need...
During the voting process...
Speaking of that voting process, when do you anticipate the board being presented with, and I think you went, I mean with our partners now, so what, when's the presentation of the, I know you're still in, this is sort of timeline?
Our goal would be before the thirtieth of May. So we don't have that scheduled yet, but we definitely make sure we do it at a perfect time.
Okay, good. Because I definitely want to review and revisit the pay scale state. So I'm just going down to the next one, because we're getting closer to that process.
Okay. There is nothing else, do I hear much from the chairman?
You said, you said it's a Thursday, you haven't made one.
Okay. Thursday, five o'clock.
Sure.
Yes.
All right. We are here.